The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call attendance. Marty, please.
Mary Jo Rosenoffsky.
Here.
Mary Jo Radcliff.
Here.
Hattie Jacobson.
Laurel Neek.
Here.
Amy Huffman.
Here.
Ningal McThundercloud. Scott Barton.
Here.
Thank you. Has the meeting been notified to the public according to open meeting laws?
Yes.
Thank you. We're now at public comment and I don't see anybody here to for that, so we'll move on. I'd like to make a motion to move 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, and 8.5 up to the agenda for now, so our guests can present right away.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. We will start right out then with our social worker and deferred expulsion report.
And actually, if you use the microphone, it picks up on tape more, so it won't really amplify you.
In the room, it'll record better.
Alright, so I am Vicky McCaulsey. For those of you who, we don't cross paths very often, I'm a school social worker, just wrapped up my third year, so I made a little PowerPoint because I heard that our nurse has a PowerPoint and I used to have this handy. Not to be outdone, I made myself a PowerPoint this year. So, just a brief overview of the committees that I'm involved with at the schools. So, the Alt Ed Committee participated in a book study this year with Culturely Responsive Teaching in the Brain. Finished up the school mental health project this year, our third year with that grant. And then, we are BRF at the high school, which is the high school PBIS team. Much more involved with the community. We meet regularly with Jackson County, with the social workers over there, together for Jackson County Kids, Wa'iki'ide We Day with the Ho'unk Ed Department, Coordinated Community Response Team, which deals with domestic abuse and violence. The HWPP grant expired in December this year, so that will be done. And then, Jackson County CST as well. Also, I apologize, I'm not feeling very well, so that's why I sound like this. A couple of grants that we had going on, like I said, the mental health project, this is the final year for that one, and the Good Neighbor Program, we continue to receive $25 vouchers for items in the Goodwill stores. So, for the homeless part of my job, just wanted to throw up a definition of what homelessness is and how we measure it in our families. So, a lot of times, people think that homelessness is living under a bridge or in a tent, when in fact, it could be just that your family is doubled up with another family. So, that's where most of our families end up, but just wanted to throw that up there for you guys.
Can I just ask, before you go on, how are you notified of most homeless families?
Most of the time, a form is filled out during registration at the beginning of the year, and as new families come in, and they have to fill it out, and if they meet the criteria on that, then I contact them to verify whether they meet the criteria or not. I wanted to throw this in there too, this will make more sense with the next slide as well, but the YRBS survey, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, included two questions on homelessness in 2017, and so the youth themselves are indicating that about 5% of them have experienced homelessness at any point during the 16, 17 school year, but the schools are only catching about 2.5% of students. And so then, if you go to the next slide, this is what we have been capturing here this last school year. I've identified 42 families, or we have identified 42 families, which is 65 students in about 3.8% of our population, so could be doing a little bit better, but capturing more than other districts capture. 14 of those families found permanent housing, 11 of those families moved, students dropped out or graduated. 14 families and 19 students are still currently experiencing homelessness. Six families are attending from other districts, so they are traveling to and from other districts to come to school here. Six of those are unaccompanied youth, so they're not living with an adult or a guardian.
So, with the people traveling, are those the students that were here and then they were homeless and had to move to another district?
That's what usually happens, yep.
And so that, I know, we're responsible for reimbursing that transportation?
Yeah.
So, they can remain in their home district?
Correct.
The McKinney-Vento Act requires that we disrupt the student as much as possible, and so if they are homeless and they have to move for that reason, we have to work with them to provide some transportation?
Give the, yeah.
To maintain their attendance here, if they choose. So, how do we get them here? What do we do for them? So, there was one time that they actually ended up in Eau Claire, right? And so, we were trying to work with other districts to see if there was any kind of a shuttle, or it ended up not coming to fruition, because I think the family just said they wanted to transfer their students in the end, but gas voucher cards would be one place. I don't know if you have a...
That's typically what I do. It's usually the easiest. Our buses don't usually mesh up the easiest. I do try that, but usually it's just a gas voucher.
Or we would have the parent drive them to one of our other bus stops that's on the outskirts of our...
North, north of us, yeah.
So, just wanted, data is no fun if you can't do anything with it, so I tried to make it more user-friendly. This is, the blue is the number of families, and then red is how many students. So, doubled up living with another family, hotel, shelter, and unsheltered. We did have, unfortunately, one family who didn't have a place to stay this year, and they were staying in their truck, so. So, this one, this is the most frustrating part of my job right now. The DEP program, we have, these numbers are approximate. There are some that may or may not happen over the summer, so the graphs on this part are assuming that they are going to happen. So, since this program was created, we've had 65 DEPs since 2012. So, here's a graph on the year that the DEP was initiated, and as you can tell, this year was a pretty tough year for us. There was lots of sharing amongst students, and so that really inflated our number for this year.
If I could just share with the board, it was the Friday before the last day of school, alcohol was drawn in the bus and was passed up and down the rows. And so, I mean, that was almost a double-digit incident of deferred expulsions. And so, I understand that is way higher than we would ever find tolerable, but I don't want you to feel like 23 days an individual came to school carrying alcohol or an illegal drug, somebody made a really poor choice to bring alcohol and then pass it up and down to the bus rows, and so that resulted in several, several, several DEPs the week before school time. Poor choices.
Yeah. This one is just showing the grade that the student was in when the DEP was initiated. So, we reached down to fifth grade again this year, all the way up through senior year, and then, I kind of rearranged the data to things that I found interesting. So, this is the kinds of things that students are doing. So, possession, they're just bringing it to school. Under the influence, we did have one student who actually came to school under the influence. Consumption, whether they're doing it at school, and distribution of their sharing it with their friends.
And just to be clear, our policy on bringing marijuana or illegal drugs to school is if there's distribution, that must be an expulsion, just that you guys are all clear. Illegal drugs, distribution, we say the intent to settle or deliver, and so that would be an expulsion, not eligible for a deferred expulsion.
This is since 2012?
Yes, yeah, this is all the data combined. And then, this is what they're bringing into the school. So, paraphernalia, marijuana is the big one, alcohol, that one. That one was because of the most recent incident, wasn't that high before. Prescription drugs is on the rise, actually, that one is a new one that keeps popping up, and then a look-alike substance. And then, this is what has happened after their programs are done. So, 19-ish in progress right now, 25 have successfully completed, and then there have been a few that have violated their agreement or have had a second offense, which led to an expulsion, transferring schools, dropouts, and a change in placement.
Before you go on, can I just ask, are there any questions about the deferred expulsion? Just because that is a large number of students, when you look at this year, was it 23 this year? We've talked before as a board about our philosophy, and a student making a poor choice one day, should that lead to expulsion forever, or should there be that opportunity for deferred expulsion opportunity? Those numbers are getting high, and so I just want to make sure that everyone is still in agreement with that philosophy, and it's certainly something we can put on a board development session for later, but if you have questions, Vicky is at every single one of those deferred expulsion meetings, and is definitely the lady to ask if you have any thoughts or concerns or questions. Concerning some of the violations, I completely understand how egregious and in-your-face it is to consume alcohol on a bus, but if I were to look at all nine of those kids and say we wanted to expel them for up to a year of school, fully buckets, I'm not sure that's the right answer either, and so I just wanted to open for that conversation, if you had any thoughts about that, because the numbers are high, but is it serving our purpose, and is that what we would rather do than expel?
I would like that on board development, I have a doubt.
Okay.
Can we break the bound even further? I don't want to know now, but demographics and...
I've got your spreadsheet. I don't know how deep you go into the demographics, but that's something...
I don't have that on there, but that would be easier for me to pull up if you got me to that.
Thank you for that, I didn't mean to keep it in trouble.
Oh, that's right. So then, I believe this is the last part of the truancy report. This has kept me pretty busy this year as well. So, again, truancy is five or more unexcused absences in a semester. So, I broke this down by building, and semester one is blue, and semester two is red. So, as you can see, Forest Street and Red Creek are pretty good, middle school is getting up there, and then the high school explodes. Every time that a student skips a class, it counts as one-seventh of a school day, so that kind of adds up up there. These are our referrals that we sent in this year. When I say we, I'm talking Jenna Rosequist, our Native American attendance specialist as well. So, at Forest Street, we sent all of our referrals to Jackson County, same with Red Creek. Middle School, we sent them all to Jackson County, and two of the students who were truant had a previous order from last year, they're still working with the county on. And then, the high school, we sent in 16 to the county, seven to the sheriff, and four of them had previous orders already.
As a group of support services, the counselors and Vicky and myself, we had a lot of conversation about feeling a significant lack of follow-through with some of the truancy efforts when brought to court. Ironically, last week, Dan Dean called me and said that Judge Becker wanted to meet with the school districts to talk about truancy, and I said, "Perfect, we are going to invite her in August," so that is a good thing. We used to do that, almost every summer, they would calibrate with all the schools in Jackson County and the local law enforcement to just talk about how is it working for you, what consequences seem to be effective, are the processes all in alignment, and it's just been a couple of years since that has happened. And so, Dan Dean was just calling to see if we would be interested, and I said, "Absolutely," because we feel like some of our referrals are not netting positive results, and so would very much appreciate some additional consequence or teeth behind some of those referrals.
So, this is a county issue, not city?
Absolutely, absolutely, yep, because it's a county judge.
And the county would deal with their situations, and it's important that they know what the school policies are and what's happening at every one of our schools, because they're going to deal with them on a consistent basis once they get to court.
So, that wraps it up. This was shared with our orange frog group, and I just loved it, so I'll feel like to throw on some stats.
It's a matter of perspective, right?
Thank you.
Any questions for Vicky before she has her own?
You don't have to say right now, but I'd be interested in more information about the Jackson County CST group of how far that has gotten and your involvement with that.
Sure, sure.
And so, being Vicky's third year, last year she had a student intern with her for...
Yeah, this year I did.
This past, yep. You say this year, it already feels past to me, but you're the one we're just finishing up, and we've already been contacted with somebody who is interested in potentially working as an intern with her for next year, and so I always appreciate whether it's a teacher taking on a student teacher, or anyone that's willing to help mentor in that role, it's great when we can help to grow the professions, but also there's extra hands to help do some of the work as well, so it's kind of a win-win situation.
And it looks like they get a variety of experiences too.
She's very grateful for that.
Thank you, Vicky.
Thank you very much.
Next will be the virtual school report.
And there's a PowerPoint, so we keep up, Vicky.
I don't have one for money, it's starting to...
Looks like you're the odd man out.
Okay, good evening, I'm Mary Burns, and I'm here to give the virtual school report. And as you can see, our numbers keep growing. I think Mr. Chambers shared with me a report that showed, I think, my first year, which might have been five or six years ago, we had 13 students, so we're up to 60 on second semester, or I should say 50 students, 60 classes. Some students take more than one class, so that's why there's a difference there, and I kind of spelled it out there. First semester, 10 students took two, and then second semester, nine students took two, and we did have one student who took three classes. So, our numbers do keep growing.
And certainly, they have to be successful at the first one before they can take two in a semester, right?
Correct.
So, that's fantastic.
These are our online classes that I actually teach MOS 1 and 2, so I had 43 enrollments this year, and then in Exploring Computer Science, just three enrollments.
What is MOS?
I'm sorry, Microsoft Office Specialist. And then, they get from that class, if they pass the MOS test, they're able to get certified in Excel, PowerPoint, Word, and Access. And so, we had 59 certifications from my MOS classes this year.
So, it's our kids that graduate with high school with that industry recognized credential already under the belt, which is fantastic.
And then, we do get money from the state for our MOS certifications, and there's like a pot of money, and it gets divided by however many kids get the certification. So, it started out, I think it was like $1,000, it's probably down to more like $650 per student.
They promised $1,000, and then they had so many people getting certifications, okay, it's like $774, some weird number, and it just keeps dying down.
It just keeps declining, yes. These are some of the classes that the students took first semester. You'll notice that some will duplicate on second semester, but there are a few unique ones on here, like RC++ and, let's see, what else is on there? Programming, logic, design.
What is that?
That's a programming language. So, the kids get, you know, that's something we don't offer, so this gives them an opportunity to take some of those classes, and I would say the majority of, the class can't be offered at the high school for them to take it online. So, these just give them an array of electives to pick from.
There are the different foreign languages in there too.
The Chinese Mandarin, my goodness.
And we really try to discourage the foreign languages, because it's really hard to learn a foreign language online without getting the chance to practice back and forth, so... But we have had some kids who have been successful, so we allow it. This is second semester. One of the things you're going to see on the next slide is we had, oh, I don't remember the exact number, but you'll see it on the slide, but we had quite a few upperclassmen taking the AP test.
Wow, that's fantastic.
So, four of those were seniors, one actually took two AP classes, and I just, I was really proud of them, that as seniors, they stretched themselves and took AP classes. These are the popular classes. So, the AP US government was, this was the first year we had students take that, and I gotta think, four, five, I think we had six students take AP, and they tested, they took the AP test, which I was, I was really proud of them.
And we don't know until July if they passed or not, just, she's not withholding that information, you don't know that?
The other thing that was new this year is the K-12 Destination Career Academy. We had one student who enrolled in that plan, or I would call it a career path, and it's for heavy machine operator, it's a pre-apprenticeship program. He took four classes, it's transcribed with Fox Valley, and so now, he can go to Keloma and become a heavy equipment operator. He has four classes under his belt, and also the Fox Valley transcript credit, so. And we did, because he didn't meet our, we have, like, they have to have a B average to enroll in online classes, he was a little bit below that, and because this was something new, and it was pretty expensive for him to do this, we had him sign an agreement that if he didn't pass with at least a C in all of his classes for the online, that he would have to reimburse the school district, and I think he was all As and Bs, so he did really well.
Clearly, it's an area of interest for him, that's great.
There are three students next year who are interested in that, so we'll have to have a discussion. These are the grades for first semester, you'll notice that the kids are pretty high achievers. The 1D+ down there, just a student that, you know, every once in a while, we get a student that just learns that online's not for them, and that was the case. He just, he was overextended, he was working a full-time job, he had other AP classes in school, and he just let it slide, and he let it go too long, and then couldn't get himself out of the hole he dug. The students who have the Cs, they will not be able to take online next year, because we have our, they have to finish with at least a B. Because we're paying that extra money, we feel like that's a fair procedure for them to follow.
And clearly, it's working for many, many kids.
And then, second semester, we did have, we did have three ops, but one of those was an AP stats class, and she probably just bit off way more than she could handle. One is going to change, because she, I just got a final grade report today, we gave her a little bit of an extension, so she did pass. And then, the other one was a foreign exchange student who left early, so that's kind of uncommon, we usually don't have that many students that would fail. But again, you'll see the, they're pretty high achieving kids. Question?
That's great. I just think that when you look at neighboring districts, we are already significantly larger than several of our neighbors, and so we already offer way more transcripted classes, way more AP classes, and by our commitment to broadening that even more to virtual, I think that it is exciting for kids to be able to have such a wide array of classes to choose from, and you look at the boy, I assumed male, I shouldn't have, the person who's doing the heavy equipment, operating, so couldn't maintain a B average in school, yet got all As and Bs, because it was something he's super interested in, and he recognizes that's a pathway to employment afterwards, and so I just think that this is a great extension of all the other work that we do, and Mary does a great job managing it.
Thank you.
Are most of these students doing these classes in school, or in a home, or is it a combination?
The majority are in school, if they are eligible for what we call Tiger Privilege, which means, this year was a 3.5 GPA average, and they had to be on privilege so that they had no disciplines, no tardies, they are eligible to go home. Because we raised it to the 3.5, more students actually had to stay in school this year, just because, like, we'd have kids at 3.47, and they could go home. The other thing we do have in place is, if they aren't on track, or they're not, they're not on track, they need to come in and work. So, even if they could go home, we bring them back in and say, "Until you're back on track, eligible for privilege, you have to work in school."
So, there's like a percentage of completion that you monitor, right?
Yeah, I monitor, like, every grading period, I monitor their grades, and sending emails, and you can go home, you're eligible to go home, you're not eligible to go home, so... And I taught at the middle school this year, so seventh block, when I'm usually, I used to be there to monitor them, so I wasn't there this year. So, we found creative ways to handle that, like, we have a really good secretary in our counseling department that can really put her thumb on kids, so she got a bunch of them back on track for me, so you just kind of look at where your resources are.
Mary, the board is always interested in educators, in growing our own educators within our school district. Is there an opportunity for kids to get education credits through any of these classes, like to go onto college to be a teacher? Are there anything counseling or...
I would say they're more the introductory courses. Like, there was a peer counseling, like, we have a student that's interested in going into counseling, she took a peer counseling class. So, I think it lets them become exposed, and we've had kids that are like, "Oh, I really love this, this is something I think I want to do," and then we have kids who try classes and say, "This is not for me."
Okay.
So, I think it really gives them a chance to do that.
Yeah, you've got quite a variety of them. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mary?
Thank you so much. Thank you very much for coming, Mary, we really appreciate it.
And now, we'll do nursing report.
Thanks, Mary.
We're all kind of disappointed, colors, I like that.
We changed it a little bit this year.
I'm Elizabeth Pardove, the school nurse, if you haven't met me before. And our health services team are me, and then Dr. Del Rogers is our school district medical advisor, and then, I really am the principal and nurse delegate staff, which include school secretaries, designated teachers, and aides. I'll start with health visits. We have thousands of visits for Band-Aids, ice, temperature checks, lice, et cetera, "I'm not feeling well, I stubbed my toe," sorts of things like that. And there's hundreds of more for more serious rashes, injuries, et cetera, that they call me in for in the schools. But this graph shows the injuries that are severe enough to recommend referral to a medical establishment. So, you can kind of see, we have kind of a dip down in February, but I'm not sure we were really into school.
We missed a lot of school days in February. And it's a short line anyway, so that might explain. Remember, you and Ju in there, both is hanging.
But we do have, you know, a number of serious injuries that occasionally occur, so. Medication is a large part of school nursing. We do administer daily medications for many things, including but not limited to ADHD seizures, diabetes, chronic illnesses, and acute illnesses. We also manage emergency and over-the-counter medications. I'm continually working to exercise best practice with medication forms, reconciliation of controlled medications, medication training, storage of all medications, and I also kind of continually reviewing our policies and procedures of how we handle the medications, and I consult with neighboring school districts too on kind of see how other districts are handling some of that. I'm kind of continually working to establish continuity of care by enhancing lines of communication with parents and with medical providers. For some students, this has required extensive collaboration as medication orders change, and providers need our assessments based on, to make appropriate medication changes. I also have worked as student advocate by picking up prescriptions sometimes when it's necessary for a family that's experiencing some hardships, and also trying to coordinate some medical supervision for certain kids during the summer months.
When you think about medication, field trips are also a heavy, heavy vote to carry, particularly in the spring with who's going where when, and how can I safely transport those meds along with...
And last year, we revised the policy on out-of-state and out-of-country school trips, because we were so, and so we reworded some of that, so that the school district has covered what the administration of medications on those sort of trips. So, some kind of numbers to go by, medications that are given to students. 1,022 students have orders, medication orders in Skyward currently, for a total of 2,533 medications, so this is kind of a large number.
You have a large percentage.
15 kids.
Yes. 533 of those medication orders were utilized, many of those multiple times, so a total of 4,805 doses of medication were administered that's shared in the school district. That is actually, I found this interesting, that was an increase of 642 doses from last year. So, this is not decreasing, this is, it's increasing.
So, is that things like Tylenol and...
That does include Tylenol, yes, that does include, it includes everything from ADHD medicines that we may give every, everyday insulin dosages for diabetics, that sort of thing, but it also includes Tylenol and ibuprofen administration that we do in school too.
What do you attribute the increase to, anything in particular?
I really don't know. We have made it easier for parents to put in ibuprofen and Tylenol orders when they register, it's now in Skyward, so we've kind of made that easier.
Is that just middle school and high school?
That's just middle school and high school.
So, just for the board's information, a parent can now check a box that says, "You may give my child Tylenol or ibuprofen at school," and so then, they would be counted in that 1,22 of students that have that medication order, because we were trying to get away from students carrying bottles in their pocket, and in their backpack, and in their locker, and us trying to guess, "Does it really look like Tylenol?" I don't know if that's Tylenol, and so now, the rule is you can't have any pills in your locker, regardless of what it is at the elementary level. If there's a child that needs to take ibuprofen or Tylenol on a regular basis, the parent is asked to bring in a box. is asked to bring in a bottle, the kid's name is put on that bottle, and then it stays in the office.
Otherwise, we just have a bottle that we dish it all.
Middle school, high school get supplies in that?
Yeah, and we kind of have to watch because Wisconsin state law kind of continually changes on whether that's actually allowed or not. So we kind of carefully watch those laws and kind of go from there with our policy. But I, my understanding is some of the idea too is that rather than having students go home because they have a headache, to work on that truancy piece that Vicki covered, that we, if we make it available to them at school, then hopefully we can improve our attendance too. So yeah, then there's also a few medication orders that we don't utilize. Some of those are Tylenol and ibuprofen orders that parents have put in and the kid never needs them. And then there's also emergency medication orders that hopefully we don't need all of those too, the EpiPens and that sort of thing, so. Special health conditions. Now, these numbers are limited to the special health conditions that are in Skyward. So that means that the parents have shared those, that information with us either through the registration process or by contacting me or one of the secretaries or somebody so that we know that these things in the system. There are kids that have additional health conditions that we're simply not aware of until something happens or there's a reason for us to be aware of in school. So we have 256 students that have 363 health conditions, nine students that are in need of diabetic cares, 25 with anaphylaxis, eight additional severe allergy, 20 with seizures. There are also other conditions that require regular nursing care that aren't included in those, that are picked up by those, that are, include G-tube care, intermittent catheterization, and many other cares. There are also several students with severe heart conditions, blood pressure conditions, brain malformations, lung conditions, and syndromes affecting multiple systems. I would say this year we have also had a number of students enter our district that have additional severe health conditions that, that affect their mobility, require extensive medical equipment. And next year we may even have a student that needs like one-on-one nursing care. So just to give you guys an idea, we are continuing, we're seeing an increase in the medical conditions that we are managing within our school walls, within the classrooms. So it is fairly significant even since my, just completed my fourth year here, and I've seen an increase just in the four years I've been here, so. IHPs, IAPs, and 504s. I think I've talked to you before about that previously we had all these health plans and we're, I'm working to, health plans, we've kind of decided or it's kind of trickled down that those are really more appropriate for kids who actually have like nursing cares that have to be delegated and trained on. So moving away from IHPs and moving into EAPs, which are emergency action plans for the kids that have emergency conditions, you know, anaphylaxis, your seizures, those sort of things that they, that there's emergency plans. And then the big thing that's kind of exploding in our world is 504s. So we're realizing that really nearly every health condition that our students have really could qualify for a 504 for them. So continuing to work together with school psychologists, counselors, teachers, parents and administration to develop 504 plans for students to cover these health needs.
Can I pause you for one second just so that the board is aware of 504 plan? It is a similar process to a special education evaluation. There's a question at the end of a special education evaluation of, is this a student with a disability and is there a need for special education services? So sometimes you get to, yes, this is a student with a disability, but they don't need special education services. Their needs can be met through a health plan or other assistance within the school. So a 504 is still a legal binding document. However, it does not get funded and so there is no additional funding for districts with their 504 students. And it does not have the case management that special education students do. So a typical special ed teacher would have between, you know, 14 and 20 students on their caseload. We're up to about 30 504s at the high school. And up until this point in our district, it has just been the school counselors that have kind of managed them with assistance from the administrator in terms of special education pupil services. And then there are a lot of the health ones. Elizabeth's heavily involved in as well. So 504s are definitely a growing phenomenon because there is legal backing behind them as well, as opposed to a health plan or something like that that just is the parent saying, my child has X, Y, or Z. Upping it to a 504 at least provides for an evaluative team to go through the process and there's an annual review and all of that stuff. So just wanted you to know what a 504 was as we go forward.
I was just going to ask you, if we get that student you're talking about that needs one-on-one nursing care, do we get extra money reimbursed for that or it just comes on, how does that work?
We would look at some reimbursement through Medicaid because I already checked with that, but it's certainly not going to cover all of that by any means.
And it's a young student, right?
I'm sorry, but?
A young student, right?
It is a three-year-old who was on a life path issue.
So here's the difference, if it was a student that transferred to another, another district, because a transfer of service opportunity that if the other district wrote in all this stuff in the IP, the student transfers to us, we can then request additional funding because they transferred. But a three-year-old is ours from the get-go, so we don't get to ask anyone for any transfer of dollars there, our student.
And I would tell you that we are seeing more and more, especially of our, our young, young ones, first to three, that are coming in with more and more medical needs, more students with wilters than we've ever seen, but more heavily medically evolved students. Just this year towards the end of the year alone, we've seen several students. And when you look at 504s, where we're seeing the explosion there is when you look at ADHD, anxiety, and depression, those are the areas where we're really seeing that explode.
Yeah, we have worked on a number of 504s this year for, like she said, anxiety, also diabetes, vision diagnoses, heart conditions, as well as many others. So it's, yeah, it's pretty, pretty involved.
I truly think the average community person would be shocked.
Yes.
At the amount of medical work that happens within our district. And, and there's a lot of people who are just, I didn't go into the medical field for a reason and they're very uncomfortable with that level of care, but it is our reality, so.
And we, and also with the 504 because it's a legal document and the school is required to uphold that, our, we, we have to uphold that not just during the school hours, but also during all extracurricular activities. So that's, I'll be upping my training for coaches and trying to, we're trying to figure out a system for finding out even what extracurricular activity certain students are involved in because those advisors for those clubs and those coaches, they need to have the training necessary to care for that student involved, that 504 plan. So it's.
What if we can't do it?
We would be breaking the law and so we would have to.
And if you can't do it and you can't find staff, what do you do?
So we have the money for it, we just can't hire someone. We would have to continue trying to hire somebody or a sub or you'd have to pull services from internally.
Or contract services.
Or contract services with somebody else, yeah. There are some businesses that have sprung up that are kind of a boutique health services for districts when they can't find some of those positions, but you can bet that they're making some money on that process as well.
Maybe that would be something that features, it's not going to be so positive in the title of the room, but it might be eye-opening to people of what extracurricular.
I'd love to talk a little bit more about what angle you'd like to take because that could go south pretty quick. So we'd have to find a way to talk about it in a way that's not blaming those families for having those children that need help.
I think it's just an awareness of why, where our finances are at. Yep, I think that's an important thing for people to know.
Again, just wanted to be careful that the people who have those children don't feel like there's any blame or, you know.
So I was on the team for about 64 IAPs this year, interviewing parents, reviewing medical records, writing health histories, and then acting as a health resource for staff that were involved in that evaluation process.
Just to clarify too, while there's not aid for the 504, just the medical type of situations, if they have an IEP and they have all these medical, there is a high-cost special education aid. We've not reached that on kids, but with, with some now, it's, it's possible that we could get additional aid because of the higher, higher need of those kids. So there is that, but we haven't met it yet.
Okay, immunizations. We hosted the flu clinic with the Jackson County Department of Health. Flu Miss was not available again this year. We had a nice turnout and find that this flu clinic is very popular with our staff and their families, as well as district families and others in the community. This year we had, the date we picked happened to be the same day as parent-teacher conferences on the elementary campus, so we held it at Red Creek. And some people really liked that and some people didn't like that. It kind of depended on their situation. But we'll work to find a date that hopefully will be good for a lot of people next year. I worked with hundreds of families to get their children into compliance for the state mandate. And our school district did meet the 99.1 compliance rate for the state mandate. However, there is, like if you were to look this up online, because I had trouble looking it up because they have changed the way the state reports our immunizations. So it kind of doesn't look like we made that per-state mandate because they, they're reporting it as like a 95.1% because that's the number of kids that are actually immunized, what they should be. But we have kids that have waivers and we have some kids that are in process, so they're working on, on catching up, which means, which ends up being 0.9% that aren't in process, have waivers, or caught up. So we didn't, we didn't make it, but it is reported a little different.
Is there a requirement for staff as well?
There is not. We're encouraged to, we encourage the, the flu vaccine and so that, and staff are compensated are, the ones that are on our insurance, that's covered. And then the district covers it for staff that are not on, on insurance, on, on our school insurance. And then I think, you know, we've been talking some about the hepatitis B vaccine. Marty and I have been talking about that some because educators are generally encouraged to get that vaccine, but some may not actually have that. So we're kind of working on that, so making sure people know that that might be a good thing to have. Vaccinations were given in the schools with public health department to help catch kids up. Sometimes parents just simply don't know that their child is due for the T-DAP vaccine when they're in sixth grade. And so we kind of provide that as an assistance for, for families to help, help get the kids caught up. I try to work to educate, inform parents of the state requirements for the next year. So I send out letters, contact families of fifth graders, so hopefully that over the summer they can do, go ahead and take care of, of that requirement. And one thing is we are aware that the school immunization requirements may change in the next few years to also include the meningial cockle vaccine for middle school and high schoolers. This may also change the timing of that required T-DAP vaccine. We thought that might be coming for next year. It is not coming for next year quite yet, but it is likely to. My understanding is neighboring states have that requirement already. So public health is seeing it coming. Once that does come, it's going to take some work and coordination with public health and with the providers in town to help immunize students, so kind of, we know that's coming. Vision, we had such a great success with the spot camera vision screenings in the past few years thanks to the Lions Club that has a spot camera and comes and helps with those screenings. So we decided to expand our screenings this year. Historically, we've only screened first, third, and fifth graders, but this year we also screened 4K and kindergartners. The exciting part of this is that our screenings flagged 40 students in 4K and kindergarten for vision difficulties. So it's pretty amazing to get glasses on kids just as they are learning to read. And hopefully that will make such a big improvement in their academic outcomes. So in total, we screened 552 students and sent home 86 referral letters. So hopefully our results are that kids can see well and will likely increase their academic performance. And our future plan includes adding second and fourth graders to the screening too.
How are those referrals followed up? Do you get a thing back from the doctors?
I send letters home requesting that they send something back. I've tried to keep a document in each school, like for Forest Street and for Red Creek of, so that teachers can, try to encourage teachers to chime in because sometimes they don't send those things back to me. A few families do, but a lot of them don't. But teachers will see their kids in class, so that's great, you know? So I, you know, or encouraging the teachers to connect with those families during parent-teacher conferences too and encourage that. So I've tried, working on doing a little bit more with that. Unfortunately, there will be some families, there are some families that simply don't follow up. And we can do as much encouraging as possible, but we are somewhat limited in that, so.
And then maybe a referral to Lions Club program would?
Oh yeah, definitely. If somebody, if there's somebody who, who needs, and the Lions Club is great, they, they research then other, they, they look into what the child's insurance is, whether there's other services available to them, whether they're eligible, whether Badger Care, Bojum Clinic, you know, things like that. And they really do a nice job of following up with that. But again, it's, we're kind of limited. We do the best we can to get glasses on kids, but unfortunately, sometimes that doesn't happen, but. And hearing screening, I still just screened the first, third, and fifth graders. 349 students were screened using the Aeroscan auto acoustic emissions device. And 12 referral letters were sent home to parents recommending follow-up hearing exams. We do fluoride program through the county health department. And so these are kind of the statistics on the number participating in that. So we report that to the, to public health and that's all kind of, that's all funded through them. Head injury protocol and post-concussion management, this has kind of been an ongoing project of mine, I guess. Over the last few years, I've worked with Don Jacobson, who's our athletic trainer, to develop a school concussion care plan for providers to complete when the student is diagnosed with a concussion. It's been kind of an ongoing process actually getting that to be followed, followed through and us actually getting those plans. And we now, we now do have a more streamlined approach. And with those concussion care plans, then the schools have the information necessary to coordinate appropriate individualized accommodations for students to optimize their academic performance while allowing their brain to fully recover. This year alone, I collaborated with Don on post-concussion care for about 20 students this year. A few of those students had extensive recoveries. Couple of them ended up with TBI diagnosis, a traumatic brain injury diagnosis, and they had care plans for that. And, or they, a couple of them end up with 504 plans for their concussion. So that required further collaboration with administration, school psychologists, teachers, and staff. And we do see an increase in this. We're much more aware of concussions. We don't send, you know, back when I was in high school, I think we sent football players back out in the field and they don't remember the second half of the game, you know, and probably suffered long-term consequences from that. And we, we recognize that, which is great. It is actually very surprising to see these students and see the symptoms that they are experiencing. It doesn't always show up during that game. Sometimes it does, but sometimes it shows up two days later. And sometimes it's worse two weeks after that. And so it's an ongoing management with that, so.
So are these all sports-related?
Not necessarily. We've had a couple that were vehicle accidents. We had a couple that were sports, a couple that were not school sports, you know? Skiing, snowboarding, that kind of thing, skateboarding, you know?
I think there was a playground one.
There, yes, yeah. So.
Horse play in general.
Yeah. Actually, horse riding, that was one at 1.2. So yeah, there's kind of all sources, so.
I couldn't agree more with the paper vigilance on identifying concupents as opposed to back in the day. I mean, there's an awareness like not another, every single one of our athletes takes the pre-screener test so that they have a baseline before they even compete. But our elementary don't before their playground stuff, the horseback rider, the, all of that stuff. But we really, there's such an increased awareness, it's really significantly different.
Yeah, and Don's focus. Yeah, and Don's focus is the return-to-play part of it. That's what her concern is, and she has a whole protocol that she follows for that. That's where we kind of coordinated. My focus is more what's happening in school and what kind of accommodations. Do we need to give them some extended time for a test? Do we need to decrease the amount of time they're on their computers? That sort of thing to help them heal that way, so. New training certifications that I did this year. I attended a Stop the Bleed training to learn how to triage victims in the event of a school shooting. Certified in the Department of Justice School Threat Assessment Protocol. I attended training on non-suicidal self-injurious behaviors. This would be things like cutting and other similar things to that, which I do see quite a bit. And I attended multiple trainings on the legality and development of 504s and continued training in mental health issues, suicide assessment, and childhood trauma. And today, I graduated from the Orange Frog. Collaboration with Community Resources, the Flu Shot Clinic with the Jackson County Public Health Department. Immunizations for the non-compliant students, also with the Public Health Department, and also fluoride program with them. We did Child Development Day screenings with Western Dairyland and the Lions Club. They helped out with that. I organized the puberty presentation for fifth graders with providers from Chrome Clinic. We have Bridgette and Brighter Smiles comes into the, into the schools, and they do the dental care. And then, vision screenings with the Lions Club. And then, I also serve as a resource for employee health. That's with the flu shots. Sometimes, employees will contact me to do some blood pressure monitoring. Serve as a resource, a health resource for them. A lot of people will seek me out if they're having an issue, not sure if they need to go into a provider yet. I'm called in to evaluate after a workplace injury. And I've been trying to do a little more with educating staff on health maintenance and health promotion. Committee involvement. The school district safety committee, the wellness committee, Alt Ed committee. I'm involved with Jackson in Action, which is a countywide childhood obesity coalition. And subcommittee is a fitness and laces to leaders. Children's Health Initiative Coalition, just revived, I guess, is the Jackson County Child Death Review Team that I am on, too. So, where they review child deaths that have occurred in Jackson County and of Jackson County residents. So, they're still kind of working on how that's going, how many times we'll meet and that sort of thing. Then, the Black River Falls Athletic Healthcare Team, and then the Regional School Nurse Consortium. CPR and first aid, oh, the red's kind of hard to read, isn't it? I completed the instructor training recertification through the American Heart Association in just in April this year. And we've been still prioritizing certifying the coaches to meet that WIAA requirement, then working on other staff prioritizing for building needs. Held classes on August 23rd, June 1st, and June 10th to train a total of 20 district employees. Then, I also coordinated with Steve Collins, EMT, to certify another 26 employees this spring. And the district purchased a number of new AEDs through a grant earlier this year. So, now we have a number, now we have 16 AEDs in our district. So, that needed a little, you know, organization. And those AEDs will continue to need to be restocked as pads expire and batteries expire and things like that. So, I cataloged and stocked all the AEDs, and I'm working with the ongoing maintenance of those.
There's not one in this office, is there?
There will be soon.
Someone just asked me that. I'm like, they go, where's the AED in this building? I'm like, I don't think we have one. What? I'm like, ooh, wow. Rent one in the other schools?
I was a little concerned about that. And my understanding is the grant that we got those through had to be in school buildings. But we, the athletic director has like the original AED that he had. So, I think that's the one we're going to move into this building. So, one thing I'm kind of excited about, I'm working on, hopefully for next year, is this Project Adam Heart Safe School. I kind of discovered this when I was looking into CPR and AED stuff. Project Adam began in 1999, following the death of Adam Lamell, a 17-year-old Whitefish Bay, Wisconsin, student who collapsed and died while playing basketball. Their mission is to have all schools have AEDs. Staff that's trained in CPR and Clearcut Cardiac Emergency Response Plan. So, there's, it's kind of spreading through the state. There's trying to get all states involved. And so, I've been looking into what that all looks like. And actually, some of it was stuff I was trying to create with cataloging AEDs and stocking them and that sort of thing. And it's like, well, this, this is actually already kind of laid out what I'm trying to do. So, and then it had some additional components, too. So, I cataloged the AEDs, stocked them for guidelines, and currently working with maintenance on appropriate locations, signage, maps, and monthly checks on the AEDs, get all that streamlined. And then, I'll be working on cardiac emergency response plans for each school, as well as identifying cardiac emergency response teams in each school. So, that's going to kind of coordinate with the emergency response teams as well. And then, I'm hoping, because as part of this, we need to conduct annual awareness training for all the faculty and staff on sudden cardiac arrest. And I think that's going to look the best by doing some of that training during building staff meetings, and so, we can go over those emergency plans. And then, another component is to have annual cardiac emergency drills in each school. So, kind of like a fire drill. So, kind of, kind of excited about that. I think that would be a nice designation to get for the district, so. Student education. I did the puberty presentation for fifth graders on March 19th. April 30th, I did a high school anatomy class. Teach a little bit about blood typing and the importance of blood types, and then assisted with the lab portion. Then, I sort of under student education, but kind of family education. I sent out the first installment of information for families on vaping. This is something that's increased greatly just in the past year. So, trying to get some information out. Yes, and it's something that many of us in the parent generation are not really familiar with what it even is or looks like. And so, trying to get some of that information out to families about even what it is and some of the health repercussions of that. And I, I really enjoy the student education part of it and connecting with the students. I would like to explore some more opportunities in the future with student education, you know, possibly something like a student health week at the high school, where we talk about information on advocating for health, regular appointments, that sort of thing, so that when the kids graduate, they maybe understand some of that health promotion and prevention piece. So, I'm kind of always looking at new opportunities for that sort of thing. So, my goals for next year are to meet the 99% compliance rate for immunizations. It's always going to be one of my goals. Work towards the Heart Safe School designation. I'd like to, I mentioned I took this up, the Bleed training. Like to look into what that kind of training might look like for some of our emergency response team members. I'm not super confident in some of that yet, so I feel like I could stand some additional training in that as well. Increase health training for coaches and ensure that the 504s are followed in extracurricular activities. So, I've already contacted our new athletic director, and I'll probably meet with him sometime in July to work on identifying who those kids are, who their coaches are, and get those coaches trained so they can make sure those kids are safe during their activities. Just continuing to streamline procedure district-wide and kind of all areas. Continuing to shift IHPs into emergency action plans when appropriate and keep the medication administration practice up to best practice guidelines. And working on 504s is going to continue to be a significant amount of time. And I can always improve the documentation on Skyward usage, too, so. Any questions?
There's never a dull day in life, Elizabeth.
Any questions for Elizabeth?
You have a full stop. We always talk about the fact that she could have a medical person follow her around so that she could just point out the medical things that need to be done, and someone else can do all the paperwork, backup stuff that needs to happen, because it's expensive, for sure.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Oh, and then there's my contact information.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Before we move on, I just want to say, on behalf of the board, we want to recognize the loss of Chad Stanley. And just taking a moment to think about all of the service that he did for our, our school district as a counselor and administrator. And he affected a lot of us in this room, as well as district-wide, for families and kids. Very, very, very tragic situation for our family. Okay, we'll move on now to community engagement. And actually, I don't think I've ever, yeah, put it on there, and here. So, what the middle school and the high school have their school handbooks ready for you. You should have seen them included in your packet with all the red line changes as they needed to be done. The one from the high school, the comment that, well, actually, both of them ended up doing. When we changed our cigarette policy, our tobacco policy, to include the vaping and the e-cigarettes and all the paraphernalia, they wanted to make sure that their student handbooks also referenced the paraphernalia, because both, I met with Dan Nordman, Dean of Students at the Middle School, and Chris Dahlheim from the high school, and they could not express enough how much that vaping is out of control in their buildings. And they said that the cartridges and the devices keep getting smaller, and there is not the smoke smell that comes out of them. And they feel like it is a game for some kids, and they simply don't understand or recognize the health risks associated with it, because they smell like berry or something, bubble gum, or whatever. And so, they both wanted to make sure that it included, as we changed our policy, any of the paraphernalia. So, if they have the charger to their vaping device, if they have that empty cartridges, all of that stuff would lead to consequences for those students. And so, those were the significant handbook updates. There was not, other than schedule stuff, there really was not any content types of changes.
This is slightly off topic. Does the vaping thing have the same laws about age that regular smoking does?
It does. It does. And so, the Health Department has actually just asked if, Jackson County Health has asked if each of the three county schools would want to get together. And they've used our policy with the other two districts to say, this is what Black River has done to try to be more inclusive to all the e-cigarette work. And they want to put together some education sessions for staff for our August back-to-school get-together, because as Elizabeth said, most of us adults have no idea when it's going on, because it's just simply not something that we're familiar with. And so, I'm hoping that by raising the familiarity with some of the adults, that can roll into some parent education sessions as well. It's a very significant challenge. I don't know if you have any questions about the handbooks or any concerns. I will tell you that the elementaries are working on theirs, and we'll have them for July. As you may recall from during the school year, our athletic code needs quite a bit of work. I wanted, Chris Dahlheim is ready to jump into that work. I really want to wait until Jay Weidman is here, our new activities director. And we have at least two parents already on board, I think a couple more, and then some student athletes as well to help rewrite that. So, I don't foresee that coming to you perhaps till August or September, but know that we, that is definitely on the radar that it needs to be rewritten. We did meet with all the employee groups this spring, and so, the employee handbooks will also be coming for our next meeting. There was very, very, very minor revisions in those as well. But again, everyone is invited to the table, and so, we'll have those for you in July. Any questions?
I make a motion to approve the student handbooks for the middle school and high school.
One second. All in favor, say aye. I oppose. I included in your package a thank-you card. I know that some of you get involved in the spring banquet and know that we do the Years of Service gifts. And so, Catherine Bishop, she has been here 40 years. She's worked in the district, and she has just this fantastic heart. And so, she just wrote such a nice card. I thought, thank you for bringing them to me and making a big hullabaloo. You make me so happy. I hope you know how much I appreciate it and you. And she just is super grateful for that. And so, I just thought you would like to know that those Years of Service gifts are recognized and appreciated. If you know Catherine, you'll appreciate this story. She doesn't, she's pretty minimalist when it comes to things, and she's pretty straightforward. And so, there's, Marty helps to pick out the gifts for them, and it says "around" thing, and has her name engraved, it's wooden, and it has her name on the top. And it's Catherine Bishop, and she's like, oh, my gosh, I'll put that in my classroom. And I go, well, open it up. And so, she opens it, and she goes, what is it? And I said, it's a cheese-cutting board. And she's like, oh, I love cheese, that's one of my favorite foods. I said, great. She opens it up, and there is little cheese-cutting knives in it. And she goes, what are these for? I said, for cutting cheese. And she was looking at it, and then she closed it, and she goes, I'm going to leave it in my classroom. I'm like, take the knives out first, Catherine. Don't leave all the cheese-cutting knives in there. It was just the funniest conversation, and then she followed up with the card. So, I wanted to share with you guys that they are appreciated, so. Our hiring season, as you know, this is prime opportunity here. Honestly, as I mentioned in my notes, the only one of these that really surprised me was Brad Lowen saying, Alex, well, he's a Black River Falls graduate. He followed his, his girlfriend has followed him during his last couple of career choices, and now he is following her. They're relocating for a husband's job, having babies, moving closer to home, all of those things. Brad, I have learned that he is going to become an apprentice brewmaster down at Sand Creek Brewing. He is tapping out of public education and just said that he needs some time away. Yeah, there you go, there you go. No pun intended, but that is what he is doing, so. We have hired Olivia Verewink as a speech and language staff. As you know, those are very difficult positions to fill. She was super excited. She's already spent a whole day here for training last week, Wednesday. And then, we've also hired two more special ed teachers for Forest Street. So, we can talk more about that when we get to the budget, so. Okay, there are still a few positions to fill, but we'll keep plugging away, so. Oh, and we do need action for those professional staff. One second. All in favor, say aye. I oppose. So, you've seen most of those reports. I did want to share with you the, there it is, it's a data review, so. 8.6, there you go. So, we have not done our universal screener data shares with you throughout the year, simply because it was not always telling us much of a story. When here's our baseline in the fall, well, great, what do you do with that? And then, mid-year, we would see an increase. And then, by spring, it was not always where we wanted it to be. It would be loose and brown. And so, we just decided that we would come at it one time, and you would get to see the whole year in review. And so, if you would advance, Jill. I just wanted to point out what screeners are being used. So, at 4K level, it's called Teaching Standards Gold. It does not have the same levels of proficiency as some of the other assessments that we use. That's why their charts are going to look a little bit differently. Kindergarten, they do a STAR early literacy, which, again, we've talked before, does not translate beautifully into the STAR reading exam, but it's the best information we have. And then, if you recall last year, the middle school moved to the ASPIRE, which is more closely aligned to the ACT ASPIRE. The ASPIRE is the test that is required for all ninth and 10th graders in this state. However, up until this point, the ASPIRE has not counted on the high school report card that the DPI gives out, which has been disappointing for us, because one of our large areas of strength at the elementary level has always been our growth in students. And our high school's never been able to document growth, because the only assessment that they've counted up until this point has been the junior ACT. And so, the high school scorecard is really based off of one grade level, one test, ACT, period. I'm very pleased that they are going to, starting with this year's scorecard, the ACT ASPIRE should be included for ninth and 10th graders. So, that means high schools will have three-fourths of their grade levels reflected on that report card, and that they will be able to measure growth, because the ASPIRE to ASPIRE, ninth grade to 10th grade, they can do growth, and then the ACT will stand alone. Just wanted to share that as well. So, what I did, the little stars up on top, that is, if we, if you think about our RTI pyramid, we always talk about the levels of intervention that we do. And the concept behind that is that 80 to 85% of your students should be getting their needs... needs met through core instruction. That has been a lot of our conversations with teachers and why we have backed off spending so much time talking about intervention and have really increased our conversations about the quality core instruction happening in every classroom. We've talked, last week, Thursday and Friday, all of our elementary teachers sat there during literacy reset. This is what quality literacy instruction looks like in Black River Falls Elementary. So everybody is now, all the straying over the years is kind of brought back to it and we really are focusing on core instruction for all students. So what I did was I put a star if 80 to 85% of the students were at least at benchmark based off of core instruction. Okay? So I just wanted to give you that quick snapshot indicator. You can add up the columns if you want to, but what the star on top tells you, core instruction at that grade level this year got 80 to 85% of our students meeting the benchmark. So again, the 4K literacy, this is based off of the Teaching Standards Gold. All it says is either you are below benchmark, you are at or you are above. And so you can clearly see where they started during the year and how much they have significantly moved. Again, that's four-year-old kindergarten, so we would certainly expect a significant growth during that year. Kindergarten literacy, oh, sorry. That's right. Kindergarten over on the other side, that is from fall to spring, that is their star early literacy test that they took. And that does do the urgent intervention, on watch benchmark and above benchmark. And if you recall, we put the above benchmark at 90th percentile and higher. And so you can see that they also have met the 80 to 85% that are at least benchmark and above or on watch and above.
It's the on watch and above.
On watch and above. Yep, sorry, I couldn't read the numbers from here. So we're not in need of intervention. Would you go forward now? First grade literacy, again, that is using the star reading. You've seen these charts before, it's been red, yellow, blue, green stacked on top. This was a way to look at the comparison between fall and spring. So there's first grade growth throughout the year. This is the exact same test, so star reading, and this is second grade literacy.
So shall I?
Yep.
If I do add up the orange columns from on watch, benchmark and
Above.
Above, that will give us the percent that is on watch and above.
Correct.
Okay. So benchmark and above would be, in this case, 55%.
Correct. Yep. And then third grade, again, you can see the significant decline in urgent intervention, which is not due to intervention, but due to quality classroom instruction that is making that swing there. Up to fourth grade. Their growth throughout the year and fifth grade. The fifth grade always does such a nice job with the above benchmark. That has been historical the last couple of years. And then, so you can see fourth grade, there's 3% above the 90th percentile and it comes to 20% in fifth grade. And then sixth grade, they dipped back down to a 10% or whatnot. So middle school, the ASPIRE is a very different animal. It does not give you all of those categories. What it does is, because the ASPIRE is aligned to the ACT, they tell you whether you are at or above benchmark is all the, that is it, either you are or you aren't. And so sixth, seventh and eighth grade, the literacy can all fit onto one chart because that is the difference between their fall and their spring and they only get the assessment twice. And so you can see that there was some, while the percentage is lower, there's significant growth in the seventh grade group and smaller movement in the other. If you recall, we used to set a goal that we would increase the percent at proficiency by 5% each year. And so they come close at 4% in sixth grade and 3% elsewhere, but don't quite reach it. And again, the seventh grade has nice growth, but lower numbers overall. So then I think we shift to math. Yep. And so 4K math results are again from that Teaching Standards Gold. And first grade is from the star math test, although the teachers would say that it's a tough test to give first graders right away in fall because it's a computer-based test and so forth. You will see that we skipped kindergarten on here. There is no, kindergarten can't take the star math and they take the star early literacy and there's like one math standard in there, but not enough to extrapolate any quality information. So we're not intentionally cutting kindergarten out there. They do a local assessment and so they talk about growth and who's being end-of-year expectations, but it looks entirely, it didn't fit the charts the way everything else did. It was one small little local made assessment, so. So second grade math practices, math results from fall to spring for second grade, third grade. You see a few more shiny stars on the top of the math ones, which is exciting. Fourth grade and fifth grade math as well. There are a large group of our teachers at the elementary level who are currently engaged in that math grant. And their involvement in the math grant is pure enthusiastic. They love it, they wanted it, they asked us to bring it back again. Whereas middle school, we had to do a little, come on, we really need your grade levels involved. And so it is not surprising that the grade levels where the teachers are feeling super fired up about it and are feeling competent and recently trained up on it, we're seeing great results with their kids as well. And middle school math results, again, you can see the growth from fall to spring and the seventh graders took a nice jump in math as well. So when I first started teaching, I was at the middle school and they used to tease and say, the seventh grade year, there's so much going on inside a kid chemically and hormonally. You could put seventh graders on the bus the first day of school, just drive around and have all these experiences and not do any direct instruction. They get off the bus, they'd be exactly where they were when they left. And yet seventh grade seems to be our biggest area of growth for the last couple of years. So maybe that has shifted someplace else by now. Any questions about the universal screener? You may remember that Stephanie has talked to you guys a little bit about the fact that we're moving away from that star assessment, that we are moving, middle school definitely is doing eye-ready. I don't remember, I don't think I heard what the elementary has decided, so I don't know. Or fast bridge is what the middle school is doing. But we are hoping that it will be a language that can be spoken across all the grade levels so we don't end up with kind of piecemeal together, so.
Will they be national norm and national?
Absolutely. That's what's important to me. And so some of the grade levels that have worked really hard during the professional learning committees to create local assessments, they were lobbying hard this year to be able to do local assessments. And I just said, I'm not willing to give up that national norm data because, so our apple is shinier from fall to spring, but how does that apple compare to apples and other? You know what? That really matters a lot to me because our only glimpse at our normative data can't be when it's for the state report card assessment. So they would love to not have to assess that often, but I just really think it's valid measurement from year to year.
How often are we doing these tests?
So the ASPIRE is twice per year, but it is longer than the star assessment. The fast bridge gets a little bit shorter again, but it will likely be given three times during the year. The star test, up until now, has been given three times a year. So I would say it's probably, oh, at the elementary level, the star test was about 30 minutes per content area. And so it's not a significant amount, but it is an interruption in instruction. And so that's why we've always talked about, if we don't use the data for anything, it really is just a waste of time. But the more the teens get savvy at using the data, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that when we get to budget as well, the more beneficial it is. What I tried to do this year is I fill up in the principals, each give their data reports. They all start talking about different things and it's hard to get the glimpse from one end to the other system. So my hope this time was that you could see literacy throughout and then math throughout so that it felt a little more inconsistent. Right. The same charts, the same everything was my hope for you. If you would rather see it in a different way, please let me know.
No.
Keep modifying. But my hope is to try to simplify so it's meaningful. All right, so there is no action needed, just wanted to share. The AGR report, they did put together a presentation, which I told them they didn't need to because I was doing that universal one. But what does need your approval are there are those two documents that need to be filed with the Department of Public Instruction. That one, and it talks about their goals and their work towards those goals. You'll notice that there is a column that talks about, describe how the implemented strategies are used to read the achievement gap reduction. And so we talk about instructional coaching for several of the grade levels. And then class sizes under 18 still work for second grade this year, but our class sizes do continue to push that 18 limit. And so we need to make sure we are maintaining that instructional coaching so that we meet the letter of the law. So both Forest Street and Red Creek have those documents that need to be filed with DPI, but need your approval first.
We're moving in a positive direction.
Is there a motion to approve the AGR?
I move to approve the AGR reports.
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Does that need our signatures?
I don't think so.
Nope, it's an electronic from the district, so we're good.
Okay.
Move on to financing facilities. You receive the monthly expenditures in your packet. Do you have any questions or anything you'd like to discuss about that? Jill, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
Make a motion to approve the monthly expenditures. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. District budget.
So Jill's going to give you a little foundational work. If anyone has a crystal ball to see where the legislature is going to land, that is super great, but right now we're
That's what I was hoping.
I thought one of you was reading that report because we haven't seen it yet. The Joint Finance Committee has passed something that would be very favorable, but it is certainly a long ways back from where Governor Evers' first proposal was. And so now there's all the infighting over whether they will all walk away, whether it will be vetoed or what will happen. So we patiently wait.
So with that waiting, we are using current law kind of numbers. We didn't jump to the bigger allocations that Governor Evers' proposal gave us, those being the per pupil amount for low spending, low revenue limit districts and the special education aid. Those are not factored in here. So if that happens, there will be this additional funds that we'll need to talk about. We have prioritized other things on the list because there's always a list. And not all things make it to the top, but we do go through a reprioritization with the admin team and looking at all those things and trying to figure out how we can best meet the needs in the district for all the kids and what our greatest priorities are. And trying to marry that with our strategic plan as well, you know, we were talking about that too. So just some of the preliminary numbers. First, we always look at what the revenue limit increases and it's about $41,000. So sometimes it's negative, that's happened too, but we are using $100 per student, so that gives us a little bit additional money going with that $100 per student. If the governor's proposal goes through, it'd be another $200 per student that we would be looking at there. And I had based this on 1,700, 1,731 kids. And you'll see down here, I had added a little bit more for 4K. We had an enrollment boon for 4K. We have about 20 more kids than I had planned on. And you'll see, it's actually requiring us to add an additional section of 4K. But with that, we do get a little bit of revenue growth and so I've added that in here to help us offset those expenses. After the three-year rolling average for the revenue limit, that will help with taking care of some of those expenses, but in that first year, it doesn't. It's more borne on us. But we do get a little bit of revenue limit relief.
And remember that a 4K student is half of an FDU handful, so that's why 20 more kids, 10 FDUs.
And then the next area, something we always talk about is what we need for those salary pools that we talked about. Usually it's a 2% pool increase. That doesn't mean everybody gets a 2% increase, but that funds our Career Advancement Guide salaries for teachers and also for our support staff and administrators and support services staff as well. And then we had the health insurance benefit increase. So remember, that was 6.4%. That is what that equates to. This is the running, right now it's a running negative deficit amount right here on the right. And then we have, looking at our special education aid for this year, we actually had budgeted less, we received more than we had budgeted, put it that way. So I'm actually able to bump that up even without going to that 30% that's in Governor Evers' proposal. We also looked at our Sage and AGR. Even though we had some decrease in enrollment at those levels, we actually have a higher free-reduced population and so that's generating more Sage money, AGR for us as well. So we're able to up that revenue limit or revenue for next year. Impact aid is also something that I looked at that also was a surprise this current year that we're finishing. And so I'm pretty confident that we're going to be able to up that budget for that revenue into next year. That again is any properties that are on, that are removed from the property tax rules, like people that work at Fort McCoy or the hotel lands that are in trust. So we get funds from the federal government for that. Some of the things that then right off the bat that we thought we could use in our reprioritization, I guess, is we had budgeted for some consultants, capital maintenance and furniture replacement in October. We had had more students than we had planned on, came to us, which was great, but that increased our revenue limit. And at that time of the year, it's real hard to hire staff and put it into ongoing expenses like that. So we did a lot of great things with PD consultants that we brought in, and Dr. Seaver's can talk more about those if she like. We just did some more for furniture replacement at Forest Street. That's where we focused some of it. And we're always able to use capital maintenance dollars. And so we put those dollars there. But again, those were kind of the first outs then, so we took those out of the budget and then we were able to do the things down low.
And I'll talk to you a little bit about some of those. So the first one is add a .5 4K teacher and a .5 special ed teacher. As we've talked about the increasing needs of our youngest students, we've been sitting with two special ed teachers for kindergarten and first grade for quite a long time. And our mentality was always that when the kids are that young, they're not necessarily identified as often. That is no longer accurate. We're getting more kids with identification younger and younger. And so Tanyi had first proposed adding a .5 special education teacher to Forest Street. And we thought, oh my gosh, it's hard enough to find a full-time special ed teacher. What have we been able to do to find a part-time special ed teacher? And then our enrollment in 4K grew so fast, we thought, I just wonder if there's somebody out there that would be interested in a part-time 4K, part-time special ed. She's so stinking excited about it. And she's like, it's my dream job. That's exactly what she wants to do. So and so just so that everyone is aware, with that 4K, we also need to rent a space because Forest Street is absolutely maxed out. We also had to increase a first grade teacher at Forest Street because of the section sizes in kindergarten, so there is not an extra space there. In fact, they're talking about perhaps music having to be taught from a cart next year because they are so full, which is disappointing. And you look at the facilities referendum that we've done, but we knew we weren't done when we passed that last referendum. And so Forest Street is bursting at the seams. So the former Learn and Play daycare, the Western Derry Land building, they are going to run a 4K program themselves that we will count and partner with them. And then they are just going to let us rent an extra classroom for half a day that we will hire the teacher for, we will pay that person, they will spend half their day teaching 4K there, and then they will spend the other half at Forest Street being a special education teacher. So we're back to borrowing spaces, which is unfortunate. Because of the increased enrollment at Forest Street and the increased needs, they advocated strongly for another building aid, somebody who has a little bit of flexibility of schedule to help some of these kids because not all of our kids who have medical needs are special education. So special ed aides can't do it and the building needs provide more flexibility in that. As I mentioned, we are also needing that first grade teacher because our kindergarten class sizes were so large this year. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about English at the high school. So as we go through our enrollments every year, it is so black and white and so easy to look at the enrollment grid, K age. There are, you know, 130 students at this grade level, there are five teachers, average class size is this. You know, it's very easy for us to do that all the way through. When you get to the high school, that gets so complicated because kids vote with their feet, so we don't know how many sections of English 9 we can, oh, English 9 is a bad example because that's a required class. We don't know how many sections of astronomy we're going to need. We don't know how many sections of college writing we're going to need. And so the kids vote with their feet, they do their initial registration, and then that creates a wish list of what they would like. Then that wish list from the kids goes to the departments and they say, based off of this number of students, this is how many sections we think we need to offer. Then that goes to Tom and he has some discussions about that. We've tried for so many years to figure out a way that we could look at the section sizes at the high school in a way that we could possibly impact some change. And so this year, we finally came up with a system and we found that there were some pretty large openings in some of those schedules. So for example, the science department had four blocks that they could give to something else. So in the past, they've used it for some guided studies for kids. So kids that were failing for classes would get scheduled into a guided study and that science teacher would be the one teaching that guided study, which is a good use of staff, because they don't have any interventionists at the high school. And so it is certainly not wasted, but it is not as intentional as perhaps another use of the staff. This year, going through that, we ended up a part-time English position. So six sections is 50% staff. So we had like eight sections of English that were available. No, I think it was like 10, so it wasn't a full-time. It was like 10 sections of English. Well, what are you gonna do? You're gonna make a teacher 20%? Absolutely not. And so when Alex Cook said he was leaving, we're like, okay. So we could just hire back a 50% English teacher, and then we would still have enough to cover. Well, then Brad Lobenstein was also scheduled to do some coaching at the high school, some instructional coaching. And then when he resigned, it's like, we're not gonna hire a brand-new teacher and ask them to do instructional coaching. So we were able to take Brad and the 50% Alex, and with the current high school English staff, one person, we had two sections that needed to be taught. And I get that this is sounding complicated, but I promise I'm gonna bring it all together. This, a 1.0 instructional technology person, I'm gonna describe to you a little bit about what that means. That's something that we've talked about in the district a lot, but we never wanted to lay anyone off to create a new position. It's not a position that would directly work with kids on a daily basis, and so it never made the prioritization. This year, everyone felt very strongly that we need to do something to help in this area. So our teachers are expected to use, at the high school level, they're expected to use Canvas, which is non-line learning module. Every staff member is expected to be very Skyward savvy. That's our student information system. We use EduClimber for all of our student data. That there's a few, a handful of people in the district who are pretty good at that. One of them happens to be one of our school psychologists. He's kind of our guru in the district for EduClimber. He's a really expensive tech guy. He should be doing school psychologist work, not teaching people how to make the charts and the graphs and to analyze the data. Our tech department, when you consider, we have three people that are full-time. We have added hundreds of devices to our organization and have not added hardware people, because they're really good at what they do. But that means they can't take on any of the instructional stuff. So right now, Tom Chambers is our lead Skyward guy, which unfortunately means we hire a new teacher in August, and Tom's busy with high school stuff. They can't get on to take attendance until Tom sits down and gives that person's rights, and it's just, it's so messy. And all of these technology tools that we purchased licenses for, there's an individual who's taken on pieces of it, but it's a little bit of this person, a little bit of this person, a little bit of this person that other people have had an interest in, so they've learned about it, but it's not cohesive. And we're not gonna use our school site to go do training on EduClimber, when, oh my gosh, he's got so much other work to be doing. So the admin team really, really, really prioritized this idea of doing an instructional technology person who would become the expert in Skyward, Canvas, EduClimber, all of those intervention tools that we use, and then they would be in the buildings, coaching the teachers and doing, and being that resource. And Marty, how much Skyward stuff do you watch tutorials on, trying to learn? Because someone will call her with a question, and it's like, she's not the Skyward expert either. And so we really need someone who's gonna take that stuff. Tom Chambers said, if I was closer to retirement, I would take that job in a heartbeat. It's my ideal job. But it shouldn't be so scattered throughout the district, because if Andy Castner left, we would lose so much of our EduClimber capabilities, because he's our school psychologist, but has also been our contact there. So we're advocating very hard. I was advocating for a full-time, then when we saw all the other things, it went to a half-time, then this English discussion. So because we have these two sections of English that still need to be covered in order to be able to eliminate a full-time position, this person, we are envisioning somebody who maybe comes from the classroom, who has a real passion for instructional technology. If you're a technology person, I would think asking them to do the school district website and social media is not too far of a stretch. If Julie Tiedens gives up the website and the social media, she can take those two sections of English that are still hanging out there at the high school, and this person could do all that other instructional technology, plus our website, plus the social media. So long story short, we can reduce a full-time English position without needing an overload or overtaxing any of our current staff, and we can significantly increase everybody's competency and efficiency when it comes to the other technology. We spend hundreds of thousands of dollars from the district on licenses for different instructional technology tools, and there's nobody shoring all of that up and doing trainings for staff. And so we just feel like we're throwing good money after bad, and we're hoping that a position like that will really help to shore that up.
So what kind of degree would that person have, Dave?
We aren't sure.
Maybe...
No, really, the eighth graders are probably really...
Yeah. No, honestly, I would envision it being perhaps a teacher, or a former teacher, or perhaps, you know, somebody who's got an interest in technology, but they have to get the education side of it. And again, our tech department are fantastic, but none of them have ever been teachers. And so we need somebody to bridge that between, here's what the hardware can do, here's what we need the software to do, and here's how it's gonna be most effective. So I would envision this person using EduClimber to create all those data reports, so when the teachers get together for their PLC, here's the reports. I'm showing them to you this week, then next week I'm gonna teach you how to print them yourself, so you can, you know, become self-efficient, and so all of that stuff. So that's our vision for that position. And who knows if we can applicant or not, but...
Well, I was just picturing, last week, our seventh grade granddaughter was home, and our relatives were coming to our house with their devices to...
So they get home early. And everyone was lined up when she's sitting there with all of her list, with everybody's device. Our guys do a great job, and I say guys, but Peggy's involved in that, do a great job with the devices. It's in all of the programs that people are expected to do. We want them to be experts on engaging with the kids, not on all those technology tools. So anyway, those are the reprioritizations that the admin team has come up with that still leaves us in the lower left-hand corner in the black, even with those ads. Do not fret, should the state budget come back positively, and there is another list you're not seeing, that was those other prioritize things. But we want to work within our means for certain, and we really feel like the conversations this year were really, really collaborative amongst the admin team. And in the past, they've always wanted to reprioritize in private ballot, because they wouldn't say it out loud, and someone just said, oh my gosh, we've talked about this in every which way this year, can't we just like raise our hands? Yes, they can just raise their hands. So it was a good process, I think. So that's our plan. That's what we would like to do, but it needs your approval.
This question isn't really about that, but I saw that advertisement for Sylvan Tutoring.
Yeah.
Is there, maybe after you're done with this, can you talk about that? Or is that part of this budget?
Nope. Nope, I can certainly talk about it. So Sylvan, we have parents from time to time that wanna know about a tutor for their child. And we sometimes have staff members that are interested in doing that in after hours, but it's a separate contract and, you know, all of that stuff. Sylvan Learning does off-site campuses all over the place. And so our first conversation was way last fall, when we didn't get the 21st Century Grant, that we thought, well, we can't do our blast after-school program. Perhaps if Sylvan Learning wasn't too expensive, we could, you know, try to supplement some of that with families or whatnot. And so we kind of, we started the conversation with them out of their Eau Claire office, and then we waited to see how many parents were gonna come to us and say, I really am missing that tutoring for my elementary-age kids. And the parents just didn't come. They had older kids in Boys and Girls Club or something else that didn't happen. But middle school, high school, we do get asked that sometimes. And so we talked to them. It is, we are gonna provide this space for it. They hire and train the teachers. They have the contract with the family. It is fiscal neutral for the district. We're just facilitating that one-on-one tutoring between...
After-school.
After-school, or summers. There is also some work happening during the summer.
And because we provide the facility, the charges to the parents is actually lower than if the parents were driving them up to Eau Claire, too.
Right. And that was one of the challenges with the office being up in Eau Claire, that a parent would be stuck with, how am I gonna get them up there on a frequent basis? So we're all about more people engaging with kids to be successful, so we just kinda got out of the way and let that happen.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the proposed budget?
So... I want to approve the 1920 district budget.
I need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, a second.
Second, okay. Thanks. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Meeting minutes. Those were also included in the motion to approve. Is there a motion to approve? So... Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Dr. Seabrook's report.
I would just share that our community survey went out in the last Tiger Tribune. That was a large initiative, Marty. Our postmaster, she tried to talk to them about how we could get the billing, and the postmaster, he's like, I don't know how to do that, but I'm going up to the cities next week, I can ask. He came back, yeah, they don't know how to do that either. So she's had a lot of conversations with the post office. We finally got a plan, because we were, if people had to put a stamp on it, we didn't get them back, all of that stuff.
They're coming in.
They are coming in. We are starting to get some responses from that. We haven't launched the electronic version yet, because we thought we'd give people an opportunity, but that is out there right now. I just wanted to share that at the Friends of the Foundation luncheon, two unsolicited people came up to me and said, I don't know, who does that Tiger Tribune, but oh my gosh. They said nothing but positive stuff pouring out of that district all the time. So I thought that was very nice. Kudos for that document as well, which is also a group effort, so good stuff. As far as other district administrators report, last week and up through today, there have been so many staff trainings going on, and, oh my goodness, all this snow day makeup time, there were...
Lots of cars.
Oh my gosh, right. Somebody asked me, is school out? Yeah, that's all staff that are still here. But it was kind of the wind down of that. And as I said, the rest of the admin team is down at the Sale Academy, and Tammy and I'll be joining them later. But otherwise, it feels like the buildings are starting to shut down then for summer. And the summer cleaning crew has done fantastic work already. We've got a good group, and they've already been through all of Forest Street, and they're already on Red Creek for that kind of cleaning, plus other summer projects.
Going on at the high...
At the high school, yeah, they're vacuuming off all the rock, because if you remember, there was that membrane, and they put rock on top of it to keep it down. And so they're, my husband's teaching driver's at it down below, and it's a huge vacuum with rocks. He's like, wow, that is a lot. But so, yeah, everything is wrapping up nicely, and staff are excited to finally kick off summer. So I don't have anything else to add. I don't know if Jill or Tammy has anything they'd like to throw in.
I was gonna highlight the amount of trainings last week, Monday. We had CPR and first aid going. Elizabeth taught a class, and then Steve Collins taught a class. And we had 17 people go through it on Monday. And again, we orchestrated all of the assistants throughout the district and making sure that they had trainings Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So we had 17 that went through it on Monday. Tuesday, we had another nine go through CPR. And then on Monday and Tuesday, if they worked in that, Monday and Tuesday, we taught nonviolent crisis intervention, and our goal is to get every assistant through it again and really update their skills. And so we had close to 40 people on Monday, another 20 on Tuesday. And then on Wednesday, I brought in a gentleman from La Crosse, who is part of their mental health coalition, and he taught mental health first aid and certified 30 of our assistants in mental health first aid. It was an eight-to-five course, which was a long day for people, but it was an absolutely amazing training, because I was able to catch the last two hours of it. And it was, he did an amazing job. I'd love to bring him in again. But we have 30 more people trained in mental health first aid certification. While they were doing that, over here, we had all of the special ed teachers, our interventionists and our reading teachers go through a full day of professional development on inclusive practices, and really kind of setting the tone for what's gonna happen next year with inclusive practices and moving these forward. So it's been just a powerful week last week, Ross.
And I'm glad that you mentioned that. Thank you, Tammy. One of the pieces of feedback that we often have gotten from some of our support staff is they feel like they are dealing with needier and needier kids, but their toolboxes don't get filled nearly as often, because they don't have all the professional development days throughout the year. And a huge kudos goes out to both Stephanie Briggin and Tammy Kilbasa, because all of those snow days, and they were racking up, there was about four days that the staff had to make up. There was some amazing work accomplished during those days. And nobody likes to come in in June and sit in a workshop all day, but the feedback that we've gotten has just been really, really, really positive. And so that would be horribly expensive to do if we had to either hire subs or pay everyone to be here. And so talk about making lemons out of lemonade all those snow days, there really was some great work done. And the support staff today is, today I had 36 people in the Orange Frog, and most of them were support staff. There were some teachers, but most of them were support staff. And so many of them have just said, oh my gosh, I've learned so much since school's been out. I just feel like I have, and make sure you come back in August, too. They were not starting over. So it really worked out really well. And in the past, that has just been such a frustration for our support staff. And Stephanie has always been the professional staff, but Tammy has dug in so hard with the support staff and all their professional training, too, that we're building toolboxes all over the place. And they report that it makes them feel invested in, it makes them feel competent, it makes them feel like they're ready to accept the challenges. So it's kind of really, really good work.
I would tell you, too, after like the mental health first aid, I got several that said absolutely one of the best trainings. And then after the Steve Care and first aid, Elizabeth did a wonderful job, and then Steve, they kept saying, Steve Collins, how knowledgeable he is, and it was just...
Jill says that all the time, too.
Yes.
You know, when you look at those two days of just Steve Care and first aid, we were able to get 26 people through, and again, not needing subs to do all of this work. And then the nonviolent, close to 60 people retrained, and they said, wow, we learned so much more than we had in the past. And so it was really, even though it was three-hour days, it was really good.
Not that we want that many snow days ever again.
No.
But it's a good use this year.
I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Dr. Seabrook. She was elected to the WASDA board to represent our region, the Wisconsin Association of District Administrators. Awesome. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Leadership, thanks, Sarah. Any questions for Dr. Seabrook? Move on to WASB. There's going to be an Equity Symposium and Leadership Conference in Appleton in July. I'm registered to go, but it looks to be a really good, busy time, daytime through the evening for Equity Symposium. Most interested, contact Marty. Any conference or workshop attendance by anyone? The CISA annual meeting was interesting. We had Paul Fisher from Elm Center, Maryland-Humbert District, present on Educators Rising, a nine-credit opportunity for them to grow their own teachers. That's why my question was prompted to Mary Burns, it was just, look, a really, make a really good opportunity that give their students who go into education, then they will be guaranteed an interview if there's a teacher opening that they qualify for. Not guarantee a spot, but guaranteed interview to encourage them to come back. And the statistics were that 35% of teachers grew up within a 30-mile radius where they're teaching. And so, I mean, that really goes to show that...
I've never heard that before.
That's what he was saying. And it was on a state thing.
So that Educator Rising is kind of similar to our FCCLA or FBLA, where they go to competitions and can prepare, things like that. And so I've talked to Paul a little bit about collaborating, so that the kids had some connection, because it's more of a Marshfield, Wausau area thing. And so he's probably the most west that he could think of. Now, our CISA is not heavily involved yet, but there was a couple of us that wanted to get it. Talking about it.
Okay, and then we need to schedule summer board development, and we're going to need a good three, four-hour time. Dr. Seabrook and I went through a few dates. We'd like to consider a daytime, just so we're all at our circus, possibly starting at noon with lunch.
Sure. So we had just tentatively put out maybe Thursday, August 8th, Thursday, August 15th, or perhaps Tuesday, August 20th, just to see if we could get everyone. Those sessions are tough to do if we don't have everybody here, because you just feel like you're coming in the dark a little bit, otherwise, but we thought perhaps, and I can do a doodle, but those are slowed down sometimes.
So we're thinking 12 to 4.
So Thursday, the 8th, Thursday, the 15th, or Tuesday, the 20th. Any of those days?
Well, Tuesday, the 8th and the 15th are our second, third choices of getting together
The 8th and the 15th are our second, third choices of getting together with some friends. If it rains, it rains. So, the 15th would be the third choice. So, that might be the 15th or the 20th, whatever. That'd be better for me.
And then, folks? That's my, one of my workdays.
There's Thursdays. Okay. Is Tuesday any better for you?
No, I work Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays mornings. And Wednesday afternoon works the best for me, but perhaps I can switch one Thursday afternoon or Wednesday afternoon. Thursdays is best.
Is that something you're willing to try? Okay.
It doesn't matter which one goes to me.
Okay. Would a Tuesday also be movable? So, the 15th or the 20th is what I'm hearing? How about you, Amy? What do you think?
At this point, I don't really have any conflicts. Though I will say, generally speaking, Tuesday's better than Thursday.
Okay.
I don't have anything specific on, because I've scheduled breakfasts.
Thank you. Can I roll that down a little bit?
Hey, August is open.
All right. So, I heard, I believe the 20th was probably the most desirable, is what I thought I heard. So, Marty, we could check in with Laurel and Nehoma and see if we could nail that down?
Good.
We thought noon to 4, if that would work for everybody? Great. So, Marty, we'll check with the other two and we'll get that on your calendars as soon as possible. And so, I wrote down deferred expulsion as one of our topics. And I also know that we still need to do our Board Self-Regal Tool. And I'm open to other topics that you guys identify that you'd like to talk about. If anyone has any off the cuff now, or is it a question?
I don't know if it would be board development, if that would be a place to do that or if it needs to be a future agenda. But I'd like to, we didn't have our policy committee.
Yes.
And I'd like to get that policy completed before the school year.
Excellent.
And then the second thing was, one of our policies, and I'm sorry, I was trying to find the... Is our policy, are they all on the internet someplace? How do I find them?
Go to District Info. Here we go.
I mean, we don't need to look at...
No, but it's very, there you go to District Info and then Board of Education and Board of Policies.
Okay. How come I was so, mine never looks like that.
Are you doing it all on your phone? Are you doing it on your phone?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay. If you just hover over this?
Yeah, VRF.org.
And then it drops down.
Okay.
And then when we click on Board Policies, you get this.
All the choices.
Well, one of our board policies is that the curriculum be balanced and perspective. And the council complains again that there isn't.
Okay.
And so, I don't know if there is a way that we can know why or how it isn't. And I know we talked a little bit about civics review of curriculum and all of that. So, knowing what resources are being used in those classes would be good.
Can I just ask for clarification?
Yes.
Is the complaint coming from someone who actually has a student in the class? Okay, that matters to me a lot as opposed to people who build perception based off of...
Right. It's coming directly from the class.
Okay. Have you asked them to report it to somebody else or to share that with somebody else?
They were wanting to be anonymous.
Okay. All right.
So, I think just knowing what web online resource, I would be curious about that anyway. Because in those classes, especially for an event launch, they're using a lot of references to news sources. And it would just be kind of good to do that.
Okay. Got it on the list. Other things?
I don't know just how to approach it or whatever, but I've had, over my time on the board, a couple of different people who have kids who have IEPs. And they result from things that need to be diagnosed from a doctor. But they, as parents, are feeling like they're not given, they have no information. So, they don't know what they don't know. And they're like, "Why isn't there something to help just educate us on what we can test or get our kids tested for so that we can make the positive steps to get them help? So that they're getting helped younger as opposed to later when everything's messed up."
And again, just seeking clarification, was it involving vision therapy?
It was different things, but they were both like, yeah, it was, they were vision-related. It was, and this was with multiple people. So, it's definitely something that has to be diagnosed by a doctor. And I get that, but like I say, and I, you don't know what you don't know as a parent.
Agree. And so, then it becomes that, well, should their child's doctor be saying, "Here's the things you scream for at this age," you know? That's where we really do struggle because like dyslexia, that's a medical diagnosis. And so, we frustrated so many parents inadvertently. Vision therapy is something that's not even recognized by the state of education world, that vision therapy is even a thing. And so, you can't have a disability in the area needing vision therapy. It's not recognized. And so, we have a couple of families who have believed strongly that they found success from a vision therapist. And so, several of them have been extremely aggressively disappointed with us. One, because a teacher made a poor choice in their word choice to that parent and said, "Well, I couldn't tell you to do that or the school district would end up paying for it."
Oh, my God.
Not what should have said, but, but I get where that comes from because if we say, "The student who has an IEP would really benefit from speech therapy all summer long." Guess what? We are now needing to pay a speech therapist all summer long. So, there is a rationale for why those words were spoken, but it just wasn't, it could have been handled differently. But it wasn't. A while back, we had a couple of teachers who had kids who went through vision therapy, which means that their parents are driving them to, La Crosse is where the one clinic is that most people tend to frequent. And so, then we brought somebody in to do some professional development. So, we've had these two very aggressive families with these vision therapy kids saying, "Can't you just do a screener?" And so, we say to the DPI, "Do you have a screener for vision therapy?" "No, because we don't recognize vision therapy." So, then I asked that doctor, I say, "Is there a screener for vision therapy? We've looked at that screener. 95% of our kids would qualify." Because, I'm not even kidding, can't attend to more than two words without looking up and needing affirmation. And I mean, they're just like, 95% of our kids would... So, I'm not trying to make light of it. And I know parents are frustrated. But the vision therapy, we have talked ad nauseam about what to do about that because these two families are extremely upset with us. And they have shared it very, very publicly that we've done nothing. And you know, my kid wouldn't have failed eighth-grade English class if their second-grade teacher had said, "Had you considered vision therapy?"
I didn't, you know, and I didn't know if it was something as simple as annually having something in the Tiger Tribune about things that can cause learning difficulties in students, but that need to be diagnosed, you know? That's not something that's going to be addressed within the school context.
If you go to your eye doctor and say, "Could you do a screening for vision therapy?", they're going to say, "No."
But this happens with dyslexia.
Yep.
And that is something that can be diagnosed.
Yes. Yes.
So, you know, I don't know much about these things at all.
Yeah.
But a lot, and a lot of parents don't. So, if they're having, you know, sometimes you think if your kid's struggling in school, that they're just not smart. But that's not always the case.
Correct. Absolutely. Absolutely. In trying to diagnose whether it's a learning problem or a vision problem or something else. Absolutely. I was not trying to make light of it. This vision therapy has just been killing us because I don't know how to go at it. It's not recognized by...
It's developmental, too. I mean, it's...
Absolutely.
Even vision acuity is developmental. And you don't put glasses on kids right away in first grade because they don't see the same. They try to get the eye muscles to work. And so, it's not always simple.
And so, a lot of it was inflamed by the comments, you know, about pain. But I get where they're coming from because if I said, "Well, your child has really been doing great with their physical therapy all school year, you know, I think that should continue all summer." Well, then the parent says, "Okay, on your dime, it's going to happen all summer." And so, you know, it's a balance for sure. But let me think on that a little bit and see what other people do. And I feel like it is partially medical, partially academic. And so, here's a list of all things that could be wrong. How do you, I don't know how to approach that, but let me think on it a little bit and see. Because we certainly don't want people to, oh, the other thing that I didn't tell you on the budget thing because it was just a neutral, we also had some Spanish time, Spanish slots available at the high school because you saw the online foreign language as well. So, we took two blocks of Marco Gravina and he is going to be the 504 coordinator at the high school, which is a brand-new position because at the high school, they've bloomed up to like 35. And the school counselors have tried to mitigate that, but with all the other roles that they play. What the 504 coordinator needs to do is be the receiver of that plan with Tammy and the parents. And then somebody needs to go to all of the teachers of that student and say, "This is Suzie. She's in your fourth block today." And Suzie gets extended time for tests. Suzie needs this help. Suzie needs this help. When you have a test and these things need to happen, feel free to send her down to my space, send her to the counseling office, send her to, you know, wherever that needs to happen. I have received several phone calls last school year, as has Tammy. Unfortunately, it's like, particularly this last year when we shifted semesters. So, it was a new semester. We had school for a day, then we didn't for like three days, then we had school for a day. And so, a parent was upset that their child's 504 accommodations weren't being recognized. And so, they went into the teacher and said, "Have you seen Jill's 504 plan?" And the teacher said, "I'm sorry, I haven't yet, but I'll certainly go check." And that parent said, "She's been in your class for two weeks. What do you mean that you haven't..." "Well, she's been in class for three weeks." Well, it was three weeks every other day when four days were canceled. So, really, you know, so we need to do better with the 504s because there are some parents who, they wanted an IEP for their child. The child didn't qualify for special education, so then they get a 504. 504 doesn't come with the case management that an IEP does. And so, there is a lot of frustration there. And so, we work together to give somebody the tools to help facilitate that process. And as kids change classes, just being that resource, on a monthly basis, just checking in with kids, how are things doing, monitoring their grades, kind of that extra case management position.
I just would like to know, have an example of a 504.
We can do that. I can bring one, an example of one to that board development.
I just don't have a grasp.
Sure. Typically, it looks almost like an IEP except it doesn't have the annual goals. It has the same level of accommodation sometimes, but I will absolutely bring you some samples.
My son gives us the type of medical and then some that have to do with the academic and the things.
Yep. And anxiety is definitely the most frequent one at the high school.
ADHD.
Dustin had a 504 for his dyslexia. He didn't qualify for special ed because he was very brilliant in so many areas except reading. And so, what she was talking about, the accommodations for testing, he got an opportunity to do them orally, take as much time. He'd always try it the regular way first and he'd always fail. And then he paid it orally and passed. But you know, he was, got a little extra help that way. And then he could, for reading, anything that he read, he would get credit for. If it was a car magazine, he just wanted him to read.
I will bring some samples to that board development.
Just some conditions that I'd like to know.
Yeah. You have.
So, I have a question about the days that were missed. So, if they missed an A-day, maybe, maybe, so when they go back to school the next day, is it an A-day or is it a B-day?
The days of the rotation are predetermined because there is shared staff, because there are field trips that would be planned. There are, you know, like at the high school, so you plan a guest speaker to come in on February 20th when you have your A-day classes. Now, February 20th becomes a B-day. And then next week, it became an A-day again. And you know, all of that stuff. So, it stays the same, but then those days that we made up with kids. So, like the built-in snow days, the first snow day that happened was an A-day. So, the first day that was built in, that is an A-day. Which isn't awesome either because then you may end up with three A-days in a row. I mean...
That's why I was asking because, you know, we had, I tried really hard just as a parent to make sure that dental appointments, vacation days were only happening on scheduled days off.
Yeah.
And then Chris ended up missing, he's like, "All of my makeup days that I, all the days I missed were all A-days and they're all my hardest classes." I'm like, "I'm sorry, honey." So, I just was curious how that actually...
Yep. So, if you go on the high school website, you can see, click on one of them, that is the A or B day. The snow days really get messy. And because we have shared staff, the high school can't decide to make it an A-day, which is an even day at the elementary. And one can't move without the other because then we don't have coverage for some of the classes. So, yeah, it's painful. Are you going to add something?
I was thinking about this winter and you know, I'm all about kids exercising. But how long in those days that it was so cold and so much snow? The people that were two miles away, those kids, do we have any truancy on those kids? Because they don't want to walk with the busing? I still would like to talk about that sometime. I don't know.
And you think two miles is too far?
I don't know for some kid. Well...
Well, you think about how some kids are dressed.
How some of them are dressed. I don't know. I just would like to talk about it.
Okay.
And I don't think, you know, everybody should exercise, but I saw kids walking and I thought, whoa.
Sometimes I think that we could look at the two miles, break the walk zone. And then I could certainly look at the truancy list and just see...
I don't even know. Or just at the tip. You know, I was thinking, I'm two miles away from the high school. Would I have wanted my kid to walk that, those days? I don't know. I don't know if there's anything we could do. But I'd like to talk about it, just to...
There's not too many locations...
Like, there's a responsible parent. There's a thing.
There's not too many locations that are up to that two miles. There may be a mile. Just because if they don't have sidewalks or they have to cross, you know, major highways, they might not...
Like, for her house, Main Street would be, they would, they wouldn't have to walk to your place because...
The Broadway, they have to walk.
They, just across the bridge in that area by the credit union, down in there.
Okay.
Maybe a little bit to the right, but there's sidewalks all the way.
Because otherwise, those kids get picked up.
But like over...
As good as I thought. Wow.
Because it's the two miles and then it's also the unusual, hazardous roadway. And so, if the highway or Main Street...
So, they live down East Street, no, we transport because there's sidewalks up East Street. Or, flipped an acreage across Highway A, they, there's some sidewalks, so we transport.
So, you transport all ages. Okay.
It's mostly, it's mostly these blocks and then across the bridge.
Maybe we could bring a...
Yeah, great man. We've got to have this area man.
So, I've decided that board development, I need your collaboration and your collaboration. You're gone, so we can prepare beforehand, right?
Okay. Yep.
No problem.
How's the property on A? I haven't been there since...
There's a sign there now.
Yeah, there's a sign advertising for bus drivers.
Yep. Pass the work. You won for sure.
Anything else for the good of the group? And those topics that you just gave me, those I put down under board development. Were you wanting some for the next board meeting or not?
I mean, if we have good, open four hours to discuss whatever, that'd be great.
Okay. I'm great with that. I just wanted clarification from the group. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thanks so much for your time, everyone. Safe travels to you. Where are you going?
Oh, yes. The line.